To order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning, we will have invocation by Counselor JT Moore, and we will have the pledge of allegiance by Pro Tem Council Crystal Smithman. You all please stand and join us. Thank you.
Please bow your heads. Father God, we just come before you today just thanking you for this opportunity, this day, this gift that you've given us to be here, Father God. We just thank you for the continued success of this city. We thank you for allowing us to be able to conduct the business of this city in an orderly fashion, Father God. And we also just pray for the citizens and the continued protection of each and every person that lives here, Father God. I thank you that we are able to work together to really move this city forward. And I also just thank you in advance for the World Games, Father God. We just thank you for bringing new people here to this city so that they can see all the beautiful things that Birmingham has to offer. I pray for each and every one of our police officers and food service providers and just any and every person that will be involved in making the World Games a beautiful experience for each and every person that is involved. And so, we just thank you for it right now, Father God, and we just praise your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Clerk. If you will read, call the roll, please. Good morning. Present. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you tell us, I know we don't have our pads this morning, so we'll be voting by voice vote. Is that correct? Thank you, councilors, if you'll note that. The councilors, I'd like to ask for approval and a second of the minutes from previous meetings from February 1st and February 8th, 2022. Thank you, councilors. Those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready from February 15th through June 7th, 2022. Good morning, Mayor Woodfin.
Good morning, Madam President. Morning, Madam President. Good morning. To the entire council, it's good to see you all this morning. Madam President and council have a few notes. Good news is I believe no presentations. So we'll get through them pretty quickly. One is today marks 23 days. That's 23 days until the World Games come to our city. July 7th through the 17th. Clearly, that's less than a month away. So to you all, to the public, well, not to y'all, but to the public, if you hadn't gotten your tickets, please do so. The World Games recently announced a limited time offer of a $35 day pass. Again, that's a $35 day pass. This allows ticket holders to attend any available game on the day of the pass. This does not include opening and closing ceremonies. So if you can, pull out your phones and go to TWG2022.com and purchase that $35 day pass. You can also go to birminghamal.gov. Be ham ready for important details for residents and businesses regarding events, road closures, and other information regarding the upcoming World Games. But Madam President, as you and the council know, there continues to be a heat advisory. Very, some extreme weather outside, heating patterns. Because of that, the city will open a second day of a cooling station to the public at the Bowwell Auditorium, located at 1930 Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. Those needing cool shelter can come to the lower level from 10:00 a.m. today to 4:30 p.m. This is in coordination with one roof and other shelters across our city will be open as well. There's some good news for us here at City Hall related to AED cabinets. If you don't know what that is, these are automated external defibrillators or the short-term AEDs. They will soon be installed on every single floor here at City Hall as many other city-owned public buildings. They're sophisticated yet very easy to use medical devices that help us reestablish or helps someone engage another person that needs medical attention here at City Hall, whether it's a visitor or an employee. Reestablish an effective heart rhythm in those experiencing sudden cardiac arrests. Having these on site could very well save the life of a resident, visitor, or employee, so we're excited about that. Madam President and council, I want to talk about satellite offices here related to doing business with City Hall. City will open a temporary satellite office for permitting and finance services during the upcoming World Games. Again, the city will be opening up a temporary satellite office for permitting and finance services during the upcoming World Games. The office will be located at 1200 Tuscaloosa Avenue. Again, that's 1200 Tuscaloosa Avenue on weekdays from Monday, June 27th through Friday, July 15th. The hours will be from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And for permits, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for finance. So again, those hours for operation will be from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for permits and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for finance. Satellite office is being offered because City Hall will have limited access due to its location within a secure perimeter. During the World Games, city services will continue at City Hall with reduced staff and limited parking because of road restrictions. In an effort to provide easy and ease of entry and quicker access to services, the satellite location is being made available. Now, when I give a few more updates, Madam President and council, now sit down. This Friday and Saturday is the Steel City Jazz Fest. It's been a while since we've had it, but we're all excited. People will be coming in from all over the country to enjoy some of their favorite jazz and R&B musicians like the Isley Brothers, music soul child, Birmingham's own Eric Essex. For tickets and more information, please go to SteelCityJazzFest.org. Again, that's SteelCityJazzFest.org. I wanted to remind you all in the public that the city has a, we brought to life the Magic City Spotlight that you receive the emails from in conversation style. And that is in partnership with V949 called the Magic City Spotlight. It will be every Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Talk to our residents about events, programs, and initiatives, and also shine a light on special people and organizations that are making significant contributions in our city. We've been having some great conversations and are proud of this partnership with this historic black-owned media organization. And you can listen on the radio at 949, or you can download the V949 app and listen from your own phone from anywhere you are. I want to acknowledge your colleague Clinton Woods, who was not present this morning, as well as Counselor Darrell Quinn, and as well as Counselor Bayte Moore to say happy early, happy Father's Day. Also to Jeff McDaniels and Cedric Sparks and all the other men that are a part of the city employee community. Don't do that.
I didn't know if you knew about my dog Rover or not, but it's all good.
I wanted to wish you all a happy, early happy Father's Day to all the men in the city of Birmingham. I hope the Sundays for you is filled with love and appreciation from your families. Madam President and council, one last note, June 10th. The city office will be closed next Monday, June 20th. An observance of June 10th, this important holiday acknowledges when slaves in Galveston, Texas were finally notified of their freedom, two and a half years after the emancipation proclamation was actually signed. There will be no trash pickup on that day. And for the schedule, please go to birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. In addition to that, please check out our city channels for all the gym team events that will take place on Sunday, or actually, majority of them Sunday. With one last note, you all got the note on the, because of the heat advisory, the shift in communication with our public to make sure we keep our public and public works employees safe as we can as well from the heat as well. But so, please be advised and act accordingly based on that schedule. Madam President, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. We appreciate you bringing us those updates and this great information of what's going on in the city. Councilors, if you want to make note of that, and I'm sure that the communications team could also help us in some of the messaging, particularly with the change in the trash pickup, the time that we need to have our trash ready. And I know some of us have gotten conditioned over the past few weeks because it was later. And so now, we'll just be sure to adhere to that and make note of that. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules to allow for us to have presentations at this time. That's okay? All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call our USFL leadership team. They're in the audience with us today. And as we know, we've had a fantastic season this year. The Stallions have just really changed things for family, entertainment, and sports. And so, we'd just like to allow them an opportunity to come today and talk to us about the experience and what we can look to for the future. So, gentlemen, if you'll come up and just introduce yourselves. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President. Brian Woods, as you know, president of football operations for the USFL. Darrell Johnston, who has a meaningful message to share with you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Darrell.
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you, Brian. We just wanted to come and say thank you to Madam President, to the entire council, to Mayor Woodfin for all the help you've provided for us. It has been a journey to get to this point. And one of the things that we knew that we had to do with the USFL was to establish trust with the city of Birmingham. We know that there's been a number of professional teams that have come here before and have not made it all the way through their vision. And we would just like to thank you for all your help, all your faith and belief in what we're trying to do here in the city of Birmingham, and help us celebrate year one. The Stallions of Birmingham were the first team to clinch their playoff spot in the South. We could not have scripted a better season the way it unfolded in year one. To have your team, our host team, be the one that was undefeated until last week, will go into the playoffs probably as the favorite to win the first championship in the USFL. And it's a testament to the relationships that have been established, the trust that we've established, and really, the friendships that were created. And we cannot thank you enough. As we move forward here towards the end of year one, we just want you to know how much we have enjoyed our time here in the city of Birmingham establishing these relationships and these friendships. I tell everybody that I have an opportunity to visit with what everybody has created here in the city of Birmingham. It is very, very unique for a city of your size to have a stadium-like protective, to have the hospitality walkable. I don't really see us being able to do this really in any other city than here in Birmingham, to have eight teams under one roof, to grow as a family, as a business in year one, and to be able to accomplish the things that we were able to do. So I just want you to know how much we appreciate everything you've done. We appreciate what you've established this year, and we're very, very excited to continue to watch those relationships grow as we move forward. Thank you very much for everything you've done for us. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And before we finish, we do have a couple of videos that we'd like to play. And Brian, did you want to speak before those videos? Are we okay?
Yes, absolutely. So, these videos are just, I'm following up on what Mr. Johnston just said. I would be remiss to not, again, share my thanks to the members of the council, you specifically, Madam President, and even more importantly, Mayor Woodfin here, who was instrumental in bringing the USFL. Without further ado, we do have some videos that were provided by our players and our head coach, Skip Holt.
Thank you very much. Cody will-
Thank you, Stallion fans in the city of Birmingham for your devoted support, week in and week out. We look forward to bringing back that USFL trophy real soon. Giddy up. Bo Scarborough, running back for the Birmingham Stallions. We're so grateful for the city of Birmingham and our devoted fans. We look forward to bringing the USFL championship home back to Birmingham. Thank you.
Birmingham, Birmingham, this is Demarcus Gates, linebacker number 47. Want to say thank you to the city of Birmingham for having us here. Want to say thank you to our devoted fans coming to support each and every game. We just want to say that we're looking forward to bringing back the 2022 USFL championship to the city of Birmingham. Once again, want to say thank you for the all the support. Giddy up.
To Mayor Woodfin and all the members of the council, we want to thank you for a very successful first season for the USFL here in the city of Birmingham. We are very grateful to the city and all the great people and our devoted and loyal fans. We are working hard when we go to Canton, Ohio to bring that USFL trophy back to the great people of Birmingham. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it.
Again, we thank you all very much, and so, just want to give you all- This has been an adventure for all of us. I know it's just been a wonderful opportunity for our residents to have this feel of professional sports. And I, like you, I think we have the best venue, the best hospitality, and the best entertainment opportunity for the fans and the families that have been here. I have, I would be remiss if I didn't say that out of all of the, I think, any of us who've been on the prior council, we know that we had a colleague that would give us pitches and talk about things all the time. And so, I just do want to thank also former president, Councilor William Parker. This was something that he wanted to see for Birmingham. And so, I'm happy that it was able to come to fruition. We also know, thank you for the thanks for Mayor Woodfin. This has been a collaborative effort between the council as well as the county and the state. And so, we hope that we have forged some very good relationships with you all and that we appreciate that you're just proud of what we've done in Birmingham and want to let you know we're proud of what you've done for us. Councilors, within all the comments, Council Pro Tem.
I would like to acknowledge Greg Jones and Michael Davis because they definitely were the ones behind the scenes that got USFL here. Y'all need y'all. You know, we have to praise you guys. You guys really work hard, even if there were like different situations that were going before the games, you guys did this. So, thank you. Thank you, Chaz Mitchell. We know you do a lot and you don't get a lot of your thanks, so thank you for that. Of course, Mayor Woodfin, thank you for taking the charge as our mayor as our city has transformed because our city is turning to a sports entertainment town. I think it's very important that all 10 of us really strive to go after that. And former council president Parker, he kind of reminds me just a little bit of Larry Langford, those Outlandish ideas. You're just like, Parker, are you sure this is gonna work? And so, I just want to thank him publicly. And also, like what Madam President said, thank you to this council. I think it really says a lot about our leadership and the vision. This is very progressive council. And I'm really happy to see this because, what was it, the Birmingham Bowl? What was that? It kind of dissolved and we were all disappointed, but you guys have exceeded our expectations. The crowds have been wonderful. I thought they were gonna die off, but they haven't. And what's so beautiful is to see the youth, to see them at the games. Where Dean and Tate, I don't know if you saw this, but there's a little girl. I was like, you know what I'm talking about, besides, she was just screaming and yelling, you guys. Like, go Birmingham Stallions! Y'all just need to get- Like, that's exactly why we have leagues like that, to give it for the kids. I would love to have been the kid to have the Stallions, the Birmingham Legion, the Squadron. This is just a great time to be in Birmingham. So thankful, thank you for all that you've done. And also, thank you for giving these young men the opportunity to play football again. That was the one thing I heard from them when they came out to Tittysville. They were like, I got cut from NFL. I was just way on my turn. I was maybe working at Best Buy or something, and I got this great opportunity. So, thank you for that. And I look forward to seeing how many of our players actually make it to the NFL maybe next year. So, thank you again.
Thank you, counselor. And I would also like to add, I'm appreciative of the community engagement that you gave, the different clinics, how you've gone into our community, our schools, as well as the Boys and Girls Club. So, you truly, often people come here and they have a great ask and they don't give in return. And so, you have really made this where this is not just one area's team, but it's been the city's team. And so, thank you for what you've done for our children, our families, and the fans. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, councilors. At this time, we'll return back to our agenda. And Madam Clerk, if you will read the items for consideration of consent.
Yes, ma'am. On page number two, with item number one. And then we go over to page 28. Item number 21. Please note that item 21 was also recommended by the Department of Finance Committee. The council should have a chief attorney that has a list of the items that have the, has the funding source for each item. On item number one, it is the funding source, it is Councilor Clark's. Now, we have item 22, 23, 24. Originally, item number 25 was requested to be withdrawn, but the mayor's office has changed their mind, so we are going to include item 25 on the consent agenda. So, that's 22, 23, 24, and 26, 27. Has funding source, again, they are on your list of items. On page 30, we have item 26, 27, 28. Item 26 also has funding source, I believe that's Councilor Clark's, especially everyone. 31, we have item 29, 30, 31, and 32. On page 32, we have items 33, 34, 35, 36. On item 33, we also have the funding source. Page 33, items 37, 38, 39, and 40. Page 34, items 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45. And page, page 35, item 46. That completes the consent agenda, and please note that there is an addendum item.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Councilors, at this time, are there any items you'd like to add or remove? Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Can we add addendum item number 47 to the consent, please?
All right. Thank you. That request is to add item 47 for consent. It's an addendum item.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we consent it, can we just know what we're doing and why? Do we not, do we have insufficient paramedics and vehicles or what?
Chief Mitchell.
Is it all? Yeah. Madam President.
Yes, sir.
So, Council Abbott, this is just some additional service that we need for the World Games. So, we're renting ambulance, so we don't have any gaps for when we have our regular stuff in service. So, it should really read that it's for the World Games, so we can have some additional services. So, we can maintain both city services and World Games services at the same time.
Okay. But they just forgot to put that in there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Girl, I'm fine with it being on consent. I just wonder what we were doing.
Thank you very much. Good question. Thanks for asking for that clarification. Any other items that you would like to remove, councilors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, can I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
I'm over approval.
All right. Thank you, councilors. Those items are approved. If you were here for any item that was listed as consent item, those have been approved, and you can have a great morning. Clerk, Madam Clerk, we'll go on with the rest of our agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Over to page 50. Do you still want me to read all of those particular items?
Yes, councilors, we have items 2 through, I believe it's 11. They all relate to, yes, they all relate, as well as 12. To 19. So, all of these items relate to an interlocal agreement that will be taken between the city of Birmingham and the municipality or the entity that is listed for sharing of equipment and services. So, I would like to ask that we entertain these items all in one vote, but the clerk does have to read each of the items. Madam Clerk.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yes.
Let me read, beginning on page 22. Item number 2. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an open corporation agreement between the city of Birmingham and the Alabamian Law Enforcement Agency for the sharing of equipment and services included of the newly proposed high and tip traffic area task force located in Birmingham, Alabama during the period up to and extending after the World Games. Item 21, the legal provide upon receipt subject to availability, serving equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to 91 troopers for bomb tech, three E-19s, 98 police vehicles, E-4 for you. Or, and both of you, World Games, 22. Item is item number 3. Also on page 22. An ordinance authorizing the mayor open corporation agreement between the city of Birmingham of Centrepoint for the sharing of equipment and services for the mutual benefit of each municipality during the period leading up to and extending and after the World Games, 22. By the common request, subject to availability, serving equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to a light tower for use in preparing for and hosting the World Games, 22. Item number 4- Item number four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Birmingham and the City of Clay for the sharing of equipment and services for the mutual municipality during the period leading up to and after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-two, the mayor will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to a light tower for use in preparing for and hosting the World Games 2022. Item number five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between Birmingham and the City of Equipment and Services for the Mutual Benefit of Each Municipality during after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-first, 2022. By a firm request, subject Certain equipment and services to Birmingham unlimited to bomb techs, one EDD K-19, bomb tech equipment. Item six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Birmingham and the City of Gardendale for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Municipality during the period leading up to and extending and after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-second, 2022. By a firm request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to a Skywatch tower, moon lift, that is police marked with cameras and air condition for and hosting the World Games 2022. Page twenty-four, item seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Birmingham and the City of Gaston for the sharing of equipment and services for the Municipality during the period leading up after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-first, 2022. Gaston will provide upon request, subject Certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to bomb techs and bomb tech equipment for and hosting the World Games 2022. Item eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal Birmingham and the City of Gardendale for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual of each municipality during the period after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-first, 22. Gardendale will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to twelve police officers and four police vehicles for use in preparing for and hosting the World Games 2022. Item nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute local cooperation agreement between Birmingham and the City of Irondale, Irondale, for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Municipality during the period and after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-second. Irondale will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to seven police officers and four police vehicles for and hosting the World Games. Item, item ten. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Birmingham and Jefferson County, Alabama, for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual up to and extending and after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-two. Jefferson County will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to one hundred sixteen D-5 nineteen sixty O-D techs, fifty police vehicles, laborers, maintenance, care workers, electricians, H-Mac techs, truck drivers, and metal detectors, detectors for and hosting the World Games 2022. Item eleven, authorizing the mayor to execute the home board for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Benefit Municipality during the period leading up to and extending after the World Games Homewood will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to eight police officers and eight police vehicles for preparing for and hosting the World Games item twelve, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute trooper for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Benefit of Each Municipality during the period and extending through after the World Games 2022. Including particularly June thirty of twenty-two, July twenty-first, twenty-two. By a firm request, subject Certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to a Skywatch tower, moon lift, that is police marked with cameras and air condition for and hosting the World Games 2022. And move on to page twenty-six. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual of each municipality during the period leading up to and after the World Games item twenty-first, 2022. Council will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to ten police officers, two EDD K-19s, two bomb techs, bomb tech equipment, K-19 equipment, and five drone tech operator equipment for use in preparing for and hosting the World Games. Item fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the City of Birmingham and the City of Mobile sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Benefit during the period leading up to and extending through and after the World Games 2022, including particularly June thirtieth, 2022, July twenty-first, 2022. The City of Mobile will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham for bomb techs with fully loaded response vehicles, one EDD K-19 for and hosting the World Games 2022. Item fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Montgomery for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Municipality during the period leading up to and extending through and after the World Games 2022, including particularly June thirty of twenty-two, July twenty-first, 2022. The City of Montgomery will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including Skywatch tower, moon lift, that is police marked with camera and air condition, two bomb techs, two E- K-19s, bomb tech equipment for and hosting the World Games 2022. Page twenty-six. Item sixteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between Birmingham and the City for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Benefit of Each Municipality during the period leading up to and extending through and after the World Games 2022. Item twenty-two, item twenty-first, 2022. The City of Mount Hood will provide upon request, subject to availability Birmingham, including but not limited to four police officers and accompanying for use in preparing for and hosting the World Games. Item seventeen. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Birmingham and the City of Pencey for the sharing of equipment and services for the Mutual Municipality during the period after the World Games 2022, including particularly June thirty of twenty-two, 2022, July twenty-first, 2022. The City of Pencey will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to a light tower for use for and hosting the World Games 2022. Item eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Birmingham and the University of Alabama for the sharing services for the benefit of each municipality during the period leading up to and extending after the World Games including particularly revealed 2022, July twenty-first, 2022. First, Alabama will provide subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham police officers, five EDD K- fifty-three, five super-racks, four message boards, four portable light towers, one radiological detector off to metal detectors, one hundred delineators for and hosting the World Games. Page twenty-eight, item nineteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute during the period leading up to and extending through after the World Games July twenty-first, 2022. Those will provide upon request, subject to availability, certain equipment and services to Birmingham, including but not limited to eight police officers and eight police vehicles for use in preparing for and hosting the World Games 2022. That's the last of the World Games.
Whew. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, at this time, Counselors, I don't believe we had a motion and a second for these items, and then we'll call them up for discussion.
I'm of approval.
Second.
All right. Do you have any discussion or any questions about any of these items? Mrs. Abbott?
I just have one question, and it's just personal information, 'cause I'm curious. On item eighteen, it talks about getting a hun, one hundred delineators from the University of Alabama, and I just wondered if anybody knows what a delineator is.
Chief Mitchell?
A what?
Magnetometers.
Oh, okay. I got you. I got you. I know what you're talking about. I just wondered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Counselors, at this time, we're ready to entertain the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No opposers. Each of those items, two through nineteen, have been approved. Thank you all, Counselors. And I really want to thank, um, Chief Mitchell. I know that you've worked with the World Games Committee for these type issues and, um, being sure that we are safe, so we thank you, and, um, all of these municipalities that will help to make our World Games a safe experience. Next item, Madam Clerk?
The next item, also on page twenty. It is an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount twelve thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars to sixty-seven. Other property legally described as East Eight, Lot Five, and West of Lot Six, Lot Twenty-Five, Birmingham Realty Companies Edition Number Four, as reported in Mount Hood, zero, 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 nine, page fourteen, in the office of the Judge of Prove Jefferson County, Alabama, PID twenty-two, zero, zero, twenty-four, four, zero, one, three, zero, one, two, zero, 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 City Account seventeen fifty-one, and located at thirty, ten, Sixteenth Avenue, North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement in accordance with Section Three Dash One Dash Four C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. This is an item of permanent operation, so we would need unanimous consent.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, motion on item.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. This item, again, is, um, an ordinance authorizing receipt of payment for, uh, foreclosed property. Any questions regarding this item? Madam Clerk, at this time, we'll entertain the vote. Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Thank you, Counselors. Item twenty is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk?
I believe that is the last item.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we will entertain our speakers list, and Madam Clerk, if you'll call the first speaker. I do want to remind you, as you come forward, as she calls your name, please give us your name, your address, and, um, we would like to ask you that you keep that to three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, the first speaker is Robert Walker. Robert Walker.
All right. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Tammy Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I know you're always here for something. And I just do want to say one thing. I think I'm doing a wonderful job on getting this town ready for, um, the World Games. I mean, I hear a lot about the progress, and I'm so proud of the progress that you are making. My only issue is that I would just like to see a little bit of, on the, toward the north side, and I'm gonna lay off until after the World Games, but after the World Games, I'm coming back.
All right.
I know y'all got a lot going on, so, but after then, 'cause our streets over there, they are in such bad shape. They are real hard on cars, even old cars, so we really do need some attention over there. Lot of overgrown lots. I was just talking to Ms. Alice. She said some of the lots I was telling her about really don't look good. You say you're paying for those, yeah? But, um, but anyway, I'm here about a dear event that's to me, and it's called Tuxedo Function in the Junction, and it's coming July the twenty-third, and it's after, I know, World Games eleven days, so it's the last weekend before the, um, World Games is. And I don't know if any of you all know the history of that, that show, but it's really, 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 it's been going on for thirty-seven years, thirty-seven. And every year, we go out, we look for people to sponsor and help, and you know, uh, you know, donate and provide services. And one thing we do And one of the things we do is we go to, we get kids from the school system around Birmingham, and, and, and we, uh, we sponsor them. We try to give them a five hundred dollar scholarship. And what we did the last year, well, we asked, gave it to the student. We didn't give it to the school, because everybody know going to college is a big thing, so they can use five hundred cash dollars. So we get, we get support in a sense of, you know, we get public works, we get restrooms and stuff like that, but I don't know if any of y'all know, but it's really been a struggle, and I'm surprised that they keep, we keep being able to put it on, because the money, once this program was in this budget, it was in the budget. At one point, we were getting fifty thousand dollars a year. And then after Mr. Hart came in, it went down to twenty-five, and then it went down to ten, then it's down to nothing. So it really is a struggle. So we're asking for you all's support, even if you all would take a kid from your alley, in your school system, and compensate a scholarship to them. Whether for a five hundred dollar scholarship, or if you want to get two, two kids, a girl and a, and a boy, that's going off to college, and there's applications that they fill out. It'd definitely be nice if you all would come, just represent and say, okay, give them a scholarship, just to be helpful, uh, come help sponsor them. It's really a struggle. We have help, had help, our Sunday council people. And they always tell me, don't come down and ask, because they're not gonna do that, not gonna do anything. That was the past administration that begged the difference. So I said, I'm gonna keep going, because at some point, one of these administrations, being what you are all the next one or whoever, we're gonna advocate that they put it back in the budget, because it's been going on for thirty-seven years. And, and, and it's a lot, and they have done a lot for the community, they do a lot for people who really do want to get out, have fun. In nineteen, we couldn't do it, but we had a good one for twenty and twenty-one. So I'm asking you all, would you all please back then maybe consider some of the, or be a help with scholarship for the kids or something, you know, because these are local kids. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's still, our school system is pretty good. We got a lot of good kids that going a long way. Million dollar scholarships money right here, right here, Birmingham. I think Birmingham one of the most talked about places, you know, and there's a lot of good things that we don't get recognized for because of, of the crime. And speaking of the crime, I s- I'm, I can tell y'all this. I see more guns now. I be out with my cannon truck, and I deal with a lot of kids and their parents. And when I tell you, I see more guns than I ever saw in my life. And, and I, if I wait on ten, ten people, nine of them, I'm, I'm gonna say seven of them got guns. And not that, not new guns, I'm talking guns that's half the size of your arm, the hamster. So they're not waiting till January the first with these guns. They are carrying them now. Our Birmingham families, they got a heavy job coming.
We thank you, Ms. Smith.
I actually think they need a raise, because if they, uh,
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you all for your turn.
Thank you. We appreciate you. We're taking consideration, uh, your requests for help. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
The next speaker is William R. Muhammad.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is William R. Muhammad. My address is four eleven Lorance Street, Birmingham, Alabama. I just, the last time, okay, uh, the last time I spoke to the council was at Five Points West, and it was dealing with census. And I am still pushing the same issue. So I wanted to take the opportunity to come back to the council and share some information with you. Uh, I got some articles, and I'm gonna try to be timely. But the first article I got, it says Birmingham Falls Below Montgomery in 2021 Census Estimates, Now Third-Largest City in Alabama. I think I might be the only person in Birmingham that every time I hear, I used to hear that, I got some good friends in Huntsville. I used to hear this about Huntsville being the largest city, and I'm the only person I know that said that's a lie. Nobody else seems to care. And in this article, it says that this Birmingham City lost more than one percent of its population between July the first, 2020, and July the first, 2021, according to new and has it underlined estimates released by the U.S. Census Bureau today. Birmingham's population fell below two hundred thousand for the first time in a hundred years, and it now stands at number three statewide behind Huntsville and now Montgomery. So, like I said, I got another article that I brought for today from the New York Times, and it said that the 2020 census undercounted Hispanics, blacks, and Native American residents. Uh, saddled with daunting logistical political obstacles, the 2020 census seriously undercounted the number of Hispanic, black, Native American residents, even though it overall population count was largely accurate. At the same time, the census overcounted white and Asian American residents, the Bureau said. In essence, the Bureau's report said minority groups mostly concentrated in cities, tribal areas were underrepresented in census figures, even though the top, the total population count in those areas often was fairly accurate. That don't make no sense. That could affect those groups' political con- conceivably persuade decisions by businesses, governments over the next decade from the, from, from the allocation of city services to locations of stores. So I just wanted to read that to you, because they are saying that they undercounted us. I'm seventy years old. I can't remember anybody asking me anything about census since I was five and six years old. The counting process, they are admitting, it's totally skewed, and yet, nobody is passionate about this but me, I guess.
Mr. Muhammad, your time is up. Are you almost near the end?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much finished.
All right.
I'm saying, and I just wanted to come to you today to ask you to consider what I'm saying, and, and, and let me know that maybe, uh, I need to cool out. Maybe this don't matter. Maybe as Birmingham, a, a majority of black city, that whatever they say, we just accept it. You know, whatever they say is the truth, more truth than the value, so give us some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and as a reminder, that census data was released in August, so thank you all very much. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Charlie Powell.
Good morning, Mr. Powell.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
My name is Charlie Powell. I'm the founding president.
And speaking to that mic for us, Mr. Powell. Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Charlie Powell. I live at forty-two oh six Fifth Avenue, North, South Point, Alabama, is where I reside now. On the north side for forty-three of my years. I've owned several properties there, several houses and property there. They doing some rapid cleanup now, because it's contaminated. I've been, I've been fighting this battle for ten years, and, uh, I have some concern from some of the peoples, and they want to know what, uh, the plans for the relocation, what we asked for, and I would like to stage a meeting with some of y'all or all of y'all, or meet in our chamber, or we could meet anywhere about this situation we going on. And they also asked me about the council member that told them that they would be there, that he would be there every quarterly, to, you know, to the meetings. And, uh, six months now, so that's two quarters, ain't it? Yeah. But how easy do folks forget now? What we all want is to move out of the area. The area is contaminated, been known for years, and to me and the peoples there, everybody getting paid but us. When I say paid, we want to be relocated, bought out, but you got peoples running around there cleaning up the soil, and, uh, they doing a good job. That's what don't make sense to me. You know, that plant been there a hundred years, contaminated a hundred years, and they only digging up two feet and putting two feet back. And the worst part about it, the, uh, soil that they moving, they leaving, it's sitting up there piled up in Collegeville on a turf until they can really move it off. And the good part about the plant now is out or shutting down. You don't hear all that stench and smell all that stench going on. And, uh, we just don't want the plant open back up no more, period. And we want to be out of there. Now, what y'all doing is good around here, building up around here. Birmingham need to be built up, but we're the forgotten neighborhood, those three neighborhoods. And, uh, it's been said that if they relocate the peoples, they want to move into Hoop City, Philly, or North Birmingham. Well, that's jumping out the skillet into the frying pan. You still got sick over there. Ain't nobody complaining about that, but we right in the mouth of this thing. And, uh, I've reached out, we've tried to get peoples from the council to come out there. I told y'all around, I get a bus, I got CDL, I can drive. I told y'all around, and let y'all see.
Oh, boy.
But now, it's one person that I've talked to, and they've been down there twice, one of the council members. That person know who, who they are, and I'm glad you saw what you saw. Some of y'all are new to this.
Mr. Powell, you're nearing end of your time, so if you could.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get a meeting with y'all, and can somebody answer some of these questions I just asked y'all, please?
Thank you very much. Next.
The mayor.
Mayor Whitson.
Madam President, this is your meeting, only if you want me to. Um, I think, um, we know Mr. Powell very well. It's always good to see Mr. Powell. Uh, we meet Mr. Powell anytime he wants to meet. Um, we continue to engage EPA. Um, I think it's important for me, anytime I talk about this topic, I, I like to remind people this is personal. Um, that my own aunt lives there, that she's lived there all my life, and she's been living there longer than I've been alive. That she lived in public housing, and now she lives in a habitat home in front of the old car. So I saw with my own eyes growing up, the sod on clothes when people hang their clothes up outside, and what exists there, right? And so, looking at her, looking at her neighbors, um, knowing families that live there, growing up my own next door in North Birmingham, having knocked on doors there, literally talking to residents over the last almost five years now. That conversation of that neighborhood and that area, because it's, he's right, it's three neighborhoods. It's always framed in three Rs, uh, revitalization, remediation, and relocation. And every R doesn't fit every resident, because every resident wants something different. There's a lot of pride for folk who live in that neighborhood. And for all the issues that exist there, there are considerable amount of people who don't want to move. And so, we have to work on those other two Rs for them around remediation and revitalization. On that last R of relocation, that is a long conversation. That takes a considerable amount of resources, and that takes us working with EPA and HUD and a host of other folk. My priority, um, is, um, the combination of those singers, who majority of them live in those single family homes. Um, but it's also, um, the multifamily in the form of, of Collegeville Housing Projects, where one hundred percent of those children attend Hudson, um, school. So this conversation is not in isolation of just city and EPA, right? That HABD is at the table, because that's a considerable amount of families. That's Mark Sullivan and his team, because you have a school right in the middle of that site, K through eighth. And that's just an extended conversation. Um, I wish I had the information in front of me, but I didn't know I would be speaking to this topic today. Uh, the remediation has been going, the remediation has been going, and it continues to go. Uh, um, the removals of that soil, et cetera. But the relocation is a very long-term conversation, um, that will not happen overnight, and it will take a considerable amount of resources, and you have to engage those who actually want to move, which is what I have found has not been the majority of people. Um, and that's just a very high level, willing to talk to Mr. Powell with you all, willing to have EPA representatives there, unwilling to do whatever Mr. Powell wants, because I agree with everything he said. Um, I don't think he's here as a foe. I think we all share his concern. We all share his compassion, um, and we want to see this issue addressed. I will end on this note. I just left an event yesterday, and I'm gonna pull it up in my phone, actually. Bear with me, Madam President and Council, I apologize. Um, the Just Economy, it's all about NCRC, and this, this conference is for this whole conversation around affordable housing and neighborhoods and growth. And the picture I took is of redlining and health outcomes. So I took two different pictures. Talks about in one column, health conditions, talks about the next column, best areas, and then the next column is redline areas. And on each column, it says minority, the percentage, poverty, life expectancy, asthma, diabetes, heart disease, hypertension, no teeth, stroke, and poor mental health. And in the green areas of those maps, you have these low numbers, um, ranging three point nine percent and two point nine percent. Versus in these redline areas, you have, um, a poverty rate of thirty-four point one percent, and a life expectancy in the green, eighty-one years of age. Life expectancy in redline areas, um, seventy years of age. Diabetes, nine point three percent in green. Twenty point two percent in redline areas. Heart disease, six point five in green, eight point eight in red. Stroke, two point nine in green areas, redline, six point five. Poor mental health, nine point six in green, eighteen point five in redline. Check this out, no teeth, right? I'm, I'm like, no teeth. Six point oh in green, twenty-nine point eight in redline. This map is of Birmingham and is juxtaposed with other maps in the country. Majority, a significant amount of Birmingham is redlined. And so, a city founded in eighteen seventy-one, we know the history here. But when you consider Collegeville, so I'll just pick one, I won't talk about all three, but I'll pick Collegeville since that's Mr. Powell grew up and spent majority of his life. You have an area that is not only, I want to define what that red line means, and then, Madam President, I'll shut up. Sorry it's taking so long. But it's a very sensitive topic. You have a, you have an area that's surrounded by industry that lends itself to every respiratory issue and respiratory disease you can think of, um, up to, including cancers. Asthma on the low end, cancer on the high end, everything in the middle. You have an area that's surrounded by train tracks, that the, um, several of your former colleagues fought for years, just to get ease, ingress, um, access for a bridge to get people in and out, including when there were health issues for paramedics and fire department. Finally happened. Didn't happen when I was growing up over there, but it finally happened. And then it's literally in an entire floodplain. The question becomes, should families have ever lived there, and I rarely say that out loud, but since Mr. Powell brought it up, should families have ever lived in Collegeville? I think we all have our own opinion to that answer. But families have been living there, and so in the conversation of relocation, hell, I'm all for it. Well, JT and I walked that neighborhood. How many folk willing to leave? I'll leave you with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Moore?
Um, I'll just kind of add to that, because I know, uh, Brother Powell brought up some different points. Um, one of which is that a council member had promised that they would come to one of their meetings every single quarter. Um, I can be honest when I'm wrong and when I made a mistake, and so I wanted to apologize to you publicly. Uh, I was looking back at the last meeting that I came to, uh, I thought that it was in January, but it was actually in November. Um, and so I just want to say that I apologize to you and to Panic. Um, I did have plans on coming in June, uh, so I will definitely be at that next meeting, all right?
Thank you.
Uh, and, and if you would, please, uh, just for the sake of the public, so that they know exactly when and where and what time these meetings take place, uh, could you share that information as well? But you got, you gotta come to the mic, I'm sorry. But you got, you gotta come to the mic, I'm sorry.
Our meetings is held on the fourth Thursday, last Thursday in the month, on every month. Uh, one more thing I'd like to say that, I was talking about the diabetes. Uh, people dying there in the council. I've had a nephew die, two. Every Sunday, Saturday, at that church, last year, two more nephews, stomach cancer. Wife, stage four cancer. Looking at a lady that been married to her for 43 years, weighing 140 pounds, go all the way down to 90 pounds. Weighed zero. I moved out the neighborhood too late. I come back to try to get my peoples out of there. Hudson School was built on contaminated soil. I won't talk no more, because I don't talk my minutes.
Thank you. Councilor Clark.
Um, this topic, you know, Mayor brings up a great point that, you know, people never should have been located here, given, uh, industrial and the low line, floodplain, the all these environmental factors that don't support, um...
Is your mic on?
My healthy life. Hello, hello?
It's not on. That's okay, go ahead, we'll give you a mic. Thank you, Mayor.
So, um, you know, the mayor brings up an interesting point, that people never should have been located here. And yet, you know, we have a community that is historic and very proud, um, in spite of all this, uh, these horrible conditions that they've endured for so long. And all of the deaths from respiratory-related illnesses and cancers, you know, from people who didn't smoke. And, you know, I've heard the stories for many years, like, you know, it should be, uh, it and a couple of other areas of town should, should always be foremost in our, um, our advocacy and, and planning, uh, to get people the kind of relief they need. Now, I saw a time when, you know, it was a lot of lawsuits and, and... But, but now, this is the first time here recently that I'm hearing people wanting to move. So, I think that is probably, that trend would be a more permanent solution for this area, because, you know, in terms of revitalization, um, light industrial would probably be a better use of this acreage land in this area than residential, because it's, it doesn't have good factors for residential living. Um, and, and when you're trying to remediate, um, environmental pollution, uh, industrial uses require encapsulation. If you're gonna have parks and schools, it requires the highest level of cleanup, which is often the most expensive. I, I just think we should, um, look at not just EPA, but also FEMA because of the floodplain, um, and see if we can get some sort of buyout going for those who are interested. Not, not forcing people out, but, you know, if there are people interested in moving, I think that's the best solution. Tell you, you can grow tomatoes, but you can't eat them. Or, you know, you should take your shoes off before you come in the house. That's not a, I mean, who wants to live like that? I mean, it's just not, A. And, and it's not the plant that just stopped operating, it's the accumulation of all these particles over 100 years. So, even if the plant's not operating, the contamination is still there. Um, I think we've gotta keep this issue foremost in our minds, uh, as we go out for grants and do whatever.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Clark. Thank you all, everyone, we appreciate, uh, Mr. Powell for continuing to bring this information forward. And we will be working, I think Mayor Woodford talked about the three Rs. And of course, um, each one of these, as he said, takes different considerations. So, we'll be working with you and keeping you up to date on what can be done. Next speaker. Good morning. Ms. Johnson, you're gonna have to speak into that mic.
I'm the Honorable Mayor, Randall Woodford. I'm here today to talk about black discrimination and I neglect my neighborhood by the Community Development Department of the City of Birmingham. As you all know, we have 99 neighborhoods. You travel all through the city, you see Welcome to Valhalla, Welcome to Crestline, Welcome to Tidingsville, Welcome to Cottageville, Welcome to Cottageville. Citizen participation has been in effect 1978 or '79. Y'all getting ready for a big party, where you inviting people from all over the world. Yet, in my underserved neighborhood, we've been trying to get a recognition sign to say Welcome to Wyoming for 15 years. We have voted it out five or six times, we have selected sites, we have selected signs. You all say we have money, we have voted out money. I don't know where our money going, because we can't, we hadn't had any projects that we voted out, sent the project sheet, sent the sender's sheets, and sent the minutes according to your rules that we've had done. And we had a white Community Development Resource Officer, Mr. Louis Vahovovich. Everything we turned in, he tried to accomplish it, uh, tell us why we couldn't do it. Since we've started having black neighborhood resource officers, we can't even have a neighborhood day without getting turned down. And that's why I feel that it's personal and it's black-on-black discrimination. And that's how Birmingham is ran. Blacks who think they have something wanna look down and take away from the poor people, just like this man from Cottageville. Cottageville is one of the most neglected areas in the city, constant. Used to be the biggest voters for Richard Arrington, and what did they get back? Absolutely nothing. Cottageville, North Birmingham, Riggins, Byers Hill, they the same as they were in 1963. And yet, our, the complexion of our council has changed from white to black. And the same people that was ignored by the white population before the Civil Rights Movement, they still are suffering. They didn't get bathrooms in Fairmont, in Oakmont until 1980. I know, I grew up out there, so I know about benign neglect, black-on-black discrimination. My mama, my cousin, my uncle, my preacher. But I also know about poor people. My mother had 10 children. I know about being poor, I know about people looking down on us, and I am absolutely tired of it. And it's not white people alone, a lot of black people worse than Bull Connor. So, don't come to me, y'all want white people to follow the rules and be just. I want black people to be just to me and my neighborhood. And when we ask for something, and you say we got money to get it, I want it. And we, I think we got $47,000 in the treasury. Wyoming wants a sign to say Welcome to Wyoming. Between 68th Street and 85th Street, First Avenue North, to I-59, I-20. Where the girl device take you to I-20, that's where we start. The one take you to 59, going out to trust, that's where we end. And we got yet to say Welcome to Wyoming. It's a simple thing, it's an easy thing. We voted it out, and yet, the black representatives who represent me won't do it. And I wanna know why. So, while y'all having this big party inviting the world, Wyoming was not invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I believe at the beginning of the meeting, we called Mr. Robert Walker. And Madam Clerk, if you'll call his name, we'll allow him to go ahead and speak.
Robert Walker.
Morning, Mr. Walker.
Good morning. One here, one, councilman, mayor. Uh, I'm Robert Walker, I reside at 312...
Mike there.
I reside at 312 68 Place North, and I'm here today not, uh, so much as a neighborhood representative, but for myself. Uh, I'm having some issues with the City of Birmingham, and, uh, I want my money. The Philip Birmingham owe me money, and I want them to pay it. From, uh, for the last few years now, I've been watching the city spend millions of dollars like, like a drunken sailor, in my opinion. Uh, just million dollars here, million dollars there, we, we, we spent $90 million on the stadium that we don't draw city taxes on. We, uh, we, we look at the millions that we spent on Southside, Altondale, and improvement of their civil system, but our civil system needed, needed assistance. But still, we can't get any help in, uh, in my area. I, I'm owed money, and they're not paying me. For the last, uh, for the last five years, uh, millions of dollars been spent primarily in this city on, uh, on white entertainment. And then, these millions of dollars been spent on white entertainment primarily came at the cost of the quality of black lives. And I want something different to happen. I want my money, because, because I'm losing my lack of quality, quality of life in my area. Uh, to, to let you know how I, I come to this, this debt. Back in 2019, almost three years to the day, I was, I was going home on 68 Place North. There was a drug bust on the corner. Police officer directed me to go down another street, 69th Street. I turned and went down 69th Street, my car hit a pop. I turned it in to the liquor department downstairs. Liquor department said they wasn't doing anything about it, because it was an addict. And I went to second floor down there, and I asked, because I knew it wasn't an addict, I've been living there forever. And I knew it wasn't a, wasn't an addict, so, but I, I just went checking the shit. They looked it up and say it's a street, 69th Street. I went back to the liquor department and told them it's not a, it's a street, pay me my money. They refused to do it. So, now, I go to Small Claims Court, that's the direction you go. I went to Small Claims Court twice, and I won, Small Claims Court. I didn't get the amount of money that I supposed to, that I was suing for, but they did, they did give me a amount. City Attorney appealed, so I had to go to District Court. Went to District Court twice, there's blankish, seen it my way, I won. I looked for my, my check to take, now, we're talking about $1,000, while y'all spending millions of dollars on other people. New people that come to town. I'm talking me, who been here all my life, spending millions of dollars with them, but $1,000, you can't see to, uh, uh, that do as, as the judge told them to do. You had two judges to say, pay me, and you won't do it. And because of that, I would say to this council, I know that, that the budget is coming up and all of these other things, until this city government do as the court system said for them to do, which is pay me, I think there shouldn't be any more discussion about budgets or signing any more contracts until this debt is, is taken care of. We, we look at Huntsville...
Mr. Walker, your time is up, so can you wrap it up?
I will wrap it up.
Thank you.
We, we look at Huntsville, Alabama. Huntsville, Alabama, they're number one now, we're number three. And the reason why Huntsville, Alabama is number one, they're not so much about what they done, what they building out there, it's about the quality of life. That's why we, we have, we have a number three status, because our quality of life is, is low. The reason why I'm standing before you now is because my quality of life is low. I'm running in the potholes, I'm damaging my, my car, my insurance rate is going up, my, my trade-in value of my car is less. So, again, I ask that, uh, nothing be done, no more contracts being, being signed, no more accounts of, uh, of, of, uh, budget, until the debt is paid that's owed to me, that just blankish that the city, that the city owes me.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Madam Clerk, does that conclude our speakers list?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. At this time, councilors, we entertain your comments, and we'll start with you, Councilor Clark. Oh, no. No. Well, can we give her the mic? I'm hopeful our AV, our, I'm hopeful our mics are part of our upgrade. Thank you. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. So, neighborhood meetings abound this week. We had the trifecta last night with meetings of Tuxedo, Rising West Princeton, and Ensley Highlands neighborhoods. Uh, tonight, Bellevue Heights neighborhood will meet at 6:30 at Brown Elementary School. Uh, the Graymont neighborhood meets Wednesday at 4:30 at Smithfield Library. And on Thursday, the Ensley neighborhood will meet via conference call at 6:00 P. M. If you need information on the conference call and dial-in codes, you can contact my office at 205-254-2304. Uh, there's a big cleanup planned for next Wednesday. It's the Five Points West and West End Community partnering with the United Way Day of Action. And this will, uh, be, take place on Wednesday, June 22nd, early in the morning. They're getting started at 7:30, going to about 11:30. The neighborhoods involved are Bellevue Heights, Central Park, Ensley Highlands, Germania Park, Fairview, Green Acres, and Rising West Princeton. Um, they're asking you to sign up online if you can. Uh, this is, the website is wca.givpulse.com. Uh, and then look for the Community Neighborhood Cleanup. And, uh, for more information, you can contact Dora Sims, um, Costella Adams Terrell, or Evane Gibson. And, let's see, there's some phone numbers here, but you can call my office, 254-2304, if you'd like to get more information. Uh, this is, um, involving Black Warrior Riverkeeper, Municipal Court, United Way Hands-On, and Miles College. Also, the Five Points West Community Fun Day that was recently postponed has been rescheduled to Saturday, August 13th. Please stay tuned for more details on that. Also, congratulations are in order to Councilor Hunter Williams and his team, as well as the Birmingham Parks and Recreation for another successful fishing rodeo at Eastlake Park. It was such a joy to see all the families out, uh, in the heat, enjoying what the city has to offer. And the lake was beautiful. Um, later on that same day, I had the most fun walking in the Pride Parade with the World Games. Between Pride Week, Fashion Week, and many other events, there were so many ways to have fun in Birmingham this past week. Uh, in, in closing, I'd just say, please be weather-aware, uh, we've had, uh, a lot of, um, heat advisories. And, you know, to beat the heat, you can check out our libraries, museums, and rec centers as an option. And, uh, if you, if someone really needs assistance, um, with regard to heat, you can try United Way 211. And the world is upon us, so that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Wood.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Real quick, also wanna kinda echo that and shout out the fishing rodeo. Uh, I had a good time out there, my, my four-year-old. I told her I was gonna take her the night before, and after being excited all night, uh, she fished for 15 minutes before, uh, moving on to something else, and so, uh, had a, had a good time there. Uh, wanna make sure all of our, our, our high school athletes, high school football players, register for the Magic City Show, uh, Magic City Showcase, uh, High School Football Combine. You go to www.magiccityshowcase.com. Uh, I had a great event last year, and, and looking forward to a bigger and better this year, so definitely take advantage of that, uh, come out and compete in the combine events, uh, 707. And, uh, we'll make sure your numbers and stats and everything get uploaded to Rivals and 24/7 Sports, and so, take advantage of that. Also, uh, this Saturday, June 18th, inviting everybody out to come out to the Man Up Breakfast. Uh, excited to kinda take that over from, uh, Councilor Hoyt. And so, uh, when he was here, we were celebrating him, uh, feels like a long time ago now, but I, I told him we would... we would, I would take that on, and so we're excited to carry that tradition forward as we celebrate fathers and men in our community that are making an impact, and so definitely come out. That's at the Birmingham Crossplex on nine AM on Saturday, so take advantage of that and, uh, look forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you very much, and I did note, I saw your daughter's picture, I think she was fishing in pearls, so. We're so excited, just someone that I love. Okay, thank you. Councilor Moore.
Uh, yes, so we have a couple of different Neighborhood Association meetings taking place, uh, this week, so today we have the Penfield Park, um, Kilo Springs, and Northeast Lake Neighborhood Association meeting taking place tonight at six P M. Uh, so if you would like to get more information about those, please make sure that you check out the, uh, Birmingham City Council website page, uh, and go to the District Four page, and you'll be able to find all those. Um, let me see. Also, this Wednesday, Dynamic Education Adventure will be having a science lab workshop at the Woodlawn Library. This workshop is an exciting, engaging journey through some, uh, really cool and really cold liquids. Uh, you'll be mesmerized by molecules and stupefied by density. Uh, it's for all, and it starts at one P M., so make sure you check that out. Uh, let me see, also, if you are a tween or teen and have an interest in painting, uh, the U A B Art Play Paint will be offering classes at the Engle Nook Library this Tuesday, as well as Woodlawn Library this Thursday, uh, called Oceans of Possibility at one P M. Uh, so go and learn about the amazing world of seashells and discover, discover how mollusk make their shells, um, and use them for protection and camouflage, and create a beautiful piece of shell art to take home. Uh, so to learn more about that, please check out the Birmingham Library's website, bham dot L I B dot L dot U S. Also, uh, last but not least, the U A B Mobile Market will be in Norwood Community Center this Wednesday from two to four P M. Uh, so remember, every dollar that you spend with your E V T card, you will earn a double buck that could be used on your next produce, uh, produce purchase at the mobile market. So that concludes all of my announcements.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Economic Development and Tourism Committee will be meeting in the chambers, uh, one week from today, on June the twenty-first, and that will be immediately following, uh, council meetings, so, uh, Mr. Moore, Mr. O'Quinn, um, if I need to text, I'll remind y'all I can. And then thanks, uh, for, uh, my staff, Parks and Rec, and especially, uh, all the people that are members of Parks and Rec that folded t-shirts, handed out bait, handed out t-shirts, and got ready for the fishing rodeo. It was a big success, and, um, it was nice to see, uh, uh, both Ms. Clark and, uh, Mr. Woods and his daughter out there. Um, and I think that, uh, it's one of my favorite times because we get to see, you don't ever see that many people at East Lake Park and that many actually families together doing something as a family, which is cool to see, because usually it's, you know, not family and kids, usually it's just one or the other. So I really enjoy getting to see, uh, people having fun, and I think that there's a video that we'll play after council, so I did video announcements. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Councilor Williams. Um, again, congratulations to you and Park and Rec and the team for what looked like a very successful event. I didn't get an invitation to a fish fry, so let's just-
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. The, um, the World Games will be here in twenty-three days. It is going to be like, um, you know, it finally got here. The, um, today is Flag Day, and it's also my son's birthday. We used to tell him that they put out all those flags for his birthday. For a long time, he fell for it, you know, the city of Homewood would put them down the median of the, of the highway, and that was a, a big deal until he figured out we were deceiving him. Anyway, the next Planning and Zoning Committee is meeting next Wednesday, June twenty-second, at three thirty P M. We have two Neighborhood Association meetings tonight. Howland Park and East Avondale Neighborhood Associations both meet at six o'clock, of course, in separate places. So I, um, hope that everybody stays safe and takes care of themselves since COVID is alive and well, and, uh, we want to make sure we all are too, so thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Abbott. Dr. O'Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, start off by saying, uh, happy Pride. Um, just happy to see all of the events this past weekend. Wasn't able to participate in the parade or, or any of the activities at, uh, Lynn Park, but my family was, and, and I know, uh, lots of folks in Birmingham, uh, appreciate that occasion to celebrate our diversity here. Um, also want to recognize a couple of folks who were pivotable in, uh, planning the Smithfield cleanup this past weekend. We had a, a really good crew out there, were able to cover a significant portion of the neighborhood. Um, in particular, Century Pipe Fitters, uh, that are located in North Avondale, um, showed up with a, a crew of about, uh, ten or twelve folks, and also stuck around afterwards and helped gather up all the, um, trash bags and put them in one place so that D P W could, um, uh, collect those first thing yesterday morning. Um, uh, also want to give a shout out to Friendly Missionary Baptist Church, um, that was, um, initiated the, the cleanup event, and, and, you know, we need those, uh, neighborhood partners to, to take that step, and, um, we fall in behind them and, you know, help make sure that everything comes together. Um, while on that subject, I also want to give a shout out to, um, Department of Public Works and, and especially Director Yates. Um, I think he's doing a, a great job under difficult circumstances. Um, he was, uh, in the hot seat last night at the Eastern Area, uh, meeting that was out at the Hawkins Rec Center. Um, uh, don't envy his position, but, um, I think he's doing, you know, a really good job under, um, difficult circumstances again. And one thing I want, do want to point out that's greatly appreciated, um, this is, you know, to the entire administration, is the, the daily updates, uh, that are coming from Public Works, um, you know, talking about the tonnage, uh, from each of the districts and which neighborhoods are serviced, um, and, you know, these are daily updates. Those are, are definitely appreciated, um, and, you know, Sybil's been sending them out by email, and they've also been posted on Nextdoor. Um, I don't, you know, I know we've had some, um, scheduling issues that D P W's, you know, actively working to correct, um, but in, you know, the, while we're trying to adjust to a new schedule, um, having those updates and communicating to people, you know, when the, the service is going to be rendered, um, is definitely appreciated. I've heard from my constituents who, who, who pointed that out to me. East Avondale Neighborhood Association is going to be having their meeting tonight via conference call. Um, you can contact my office at two five four, two six seven nine, um, for additional information, for the call-in information. Um, I did want to ask Chief Sparks and Chief Mitchell, um, pretty much every neighborhood meeting in East Avondale, they've been discussing, um, activities, adjacent commercial activities that, um, they're concerned with. So, um, if possible, if we could have, uh, an appropriate member of the P E P staff to speak with the neighborhood officers in the context of one of those meetings about those concerns, um, I know that they would greatly appreciate it. Again, it's been every meeting, so, uh, thank you. And, and lastly, and this will be the last time that I announce this, um, as I've been announcing for many meetings previous, uh, there are two, uh, board openings that we are seeking applicants for. The first is the Birmingham Parking Authority Board, for which, uh, the only qualification is that you be a resident of the city of Birmingham, and the second is Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, for which you must be a county resident. Please email your resume and letter of interest to, um, Maisha Hutchinson at maisha.hutchinson at birminghamal.gov, or myself, by Monday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, and that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn. Madam Pro temp.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I know we have a cleanup video, um, that we're going to play after council meeting, but I want to say, uh, kudos to, is it Council, Council Woods, did you have a cleanup this weekend? Council Woods, Council O'Quinn, Council Clark, maybe? Did you have one? Nope. Nope. Tate, and Council Tate and myself. Um, I'm really happy to see us coming together and getting different neighborhoods and organizations to really, uh, clean up our neighborhoods. I think we have to continue to have a more proactive approach to clean them up. Um, we can't always rely on Public Works to clean up. And also, I encourage our constituents, please, if you see an overgrown law, illegal dumping, please call three one one. Um, don't assume Public Works is going to cut it or pick it up just because they see it. Um, they do need to have a request in. And thank you to Public Works. I will, um, as Council Quinn said, to everything that they have done, those updates have been very helpful. I've been sending them to my neighborhood leaders, and I think it gives people, our constituents, a sort of comfort that they're still working, um, and that's all they really want is just update. Kudos to, um, my friend, Council Hunter Williams, for the fishing rodeo. I wasn't able to attend, but my father and my nephew attended, and my nephew had so much fun playing with the other kids, um, so I, I think that was just really great things, so look at you, Hunter. So, the next Budget and Finance meeting is on Monday, June twenty-seventh, at three thirty P M. in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, June twenty-second at noon. Uh, email the Quita Wilson, and then you can just C C me. South Tussisville Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at five thirty, is teleconference. The call-in number is six zero two, five eight zero, nine four eight four, and the access code is six eight four, six six one zero pound. Arlington West Stand Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at six P M. at the West Stand Library. Uh, don't forget, the last budget hearing is this Thursday, June sixteenth, at five thirty P M. in the council chambers, and I know that we're, um, also discussing the budget at tomorrow's committee, the whole meeting as well. Uh, tonight, we join the Alzheimer's Association, Tussisville Library, and myself, as we hear from guest speakers, Dr. Clay and Dr. Griffin, about the signs and symptoms of Alzheimer's disease and the resources available to our local caregivers, followed by a time of Q and A as a community. This is a free event, but pre-registration is required, so you can join us in person, in person at the library or virtually through Zoom. You can register today at our website, W W W dot D six B H A dot com. Uh, the U A B Live Health Smart Alabama Mobile Wellness will be at Memorial Park tomorrow from nine thirty to one thirty. They are providing free wellness screenings. Um, lastly, happy Juneteenth, everyone. Um, I know there are different Juneteenth events throughout the city. There's one in particular in District Six at the Crescent Cultural Center in West End this weekend. That's at eleven twenty-one Tuscaloosa Avenue Southwest. Uh, the Black Diamond will have a banquet this Friday at seven, and a film and musical festival at one on Saturday and one on Sunday. Also, um, everybody, please be safe. There is a uptick in cases for COVID. As you can see, we have on masks, so wear your mask, uh, get tested. It's your choice if you want to get the vaccine shots, the booster shots, but just please be safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, North Prep Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at six thirty P M. via conference call. The number is six oh five, three one three, forty one hundred. Access code is one two two, six nine four five. East Thomas Neighborhood will meet tonight via Zoom at six o'clock. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will meet tonight, six P M. via conference call, with call and details to come. Ensley Neighborhood will meet on Thursday, June the sixteenth, at six P M. in person at McElpine Rec Center, located at eleven fifteen Avenue F Ensley. You can also join the meeting via conference by dialing five six four, triple eight, five five one five. Access code is eight one eight, zero one seven. The next public safety meeting will be today at one P M. Then the next public safety meeting will be June the twenty-eighth at one P M. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, the twenty-third at one P M. And on this Thursday, you can join me at, from twelve thirty to two P M. I will be a speaker at the U A B's Public Health Influencers Summer Program. This event will take place at North Birmingham Library, located at twenty-five oh one, Thirty-Fifth Avenue North in North Birmingham, and congratulations to my colleague Hunter Williams on your fishing rodeo. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there because District Nine was still on the Be Little Free campaign in South Prep and Central Prep, cleaning up this weekend, so congratulations to Hunter Williams. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. The announcements for District Seven, there will, the U A B Mobile Market is actually in District Seven today, be there from one to three P M. at the Poudley Library at Wiggins Park. That's at thirty-three oh one Jefferson Avenue Southwest. Affordable foods, healthy, fresh foods will be available at that time. Also, today, we have two neighborhood meetings. The East Brownsville Neighborhood Association will meet at six P M. via conference call, and the Riley Travallip Neighborhood will meet at six P M. at Noble Chapel, C M E Church, and that's at thirty-seven hundred Maple Avenue Southwest. Tomorrow, councilors, as a reminder, we do have the committee of the whole meeting. We'll meet at three thirty P M. in the council chambers. Our agenda includes an update on recycling. Uh, our city clerk, Mr. Frazier, will give us an update on Granicas and legislate, as well as we'll be having our budget discussion at that time. And, uh, you'll get your questions and things answered during that time. Uh, Thursday, June sixteenth, we have two neighborhood meetings. The Industrial Center Neighborhood will meet at one P M. That's in person, as well as the Hillman Neighborhood will meet at six P M. at the Mary Door Center. On Saturday, the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood will host a cleanup that will begin at the Oxmoor Valley Community Center. That happens at ten A M. I, I echo the comments of our councilors. We do thank each of the residents and those organizations and groups that assist us with our neighborhood cleanups. It can be large, or it can be small. If you would like to have one in District Seven, please just call our office at two oh five, two five four, two four nine eight. We bring all of the equipment and the fun, so come on out and join us. And as already been said, the World Games is coming. I just love to hear, Ms. Abbott, we're going to let it say it for twenty-three, uh, two more times. How many meetings we have?
Yeah, I think there's two more.
All right, so we'll be ready for that. We do thank the USFL, um, for the presentation today, and I hope the residents saw the, how grateful they are as a city for, uh, the support we've given, not only to the stallions, but to the USFL, so thank you all. With nothing else further being said, councilors, can I entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moves.
Second.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Council meeting is adjourned.
We're out here at the twenty-fifth Annual Fishing Rodeo. We have a great turnout, a few thousand people out here. Everyone's having a great time. It's great to see everybody out in East Lake Park, enjoying the beautiful summer day. It's a little hot, but we hadn't heard much complaining. People are catching fish. We have kids of all ages out here, uh, lots of families out here. Pretty much the entire lake is filled up, uh, with people just out here having a good time.
Well, it's pretty awesome to see all the families out, all the kids out with, uh, family members, and they're enjoying the park this way. Uh, it's just a great feeling.
Oh, yeah, here nice and cute.
So it's really great to see people coming out, being part of the community, enjoying our public parks, and we're really excited to continue this great tradition, which is the twenty-fifth Annual Fishing Rodeo.
Well, a young man caught the first fish, or I guess he was the first to report that he caught the first fish, so he was being loaded up with prizes and really excited.
So yesterday, we stocked the lake with about two thousand pounds of catfish. We had the USFL out here with some of their athletes. We had, uh, bass masters out here doing a, a fishing clinic, kind of showing the kids how to fish.
It makes me proud to be a member of our park board, to see, uh, this sort of engagement with our, uh, natural spaces.
And it was a great time also to have everybody, uh, from, uh, youth camps and different children's groups out here, being able to enjoy the park and also learn something, having a good time with the USFL players, but also learning how to put together rod and reel, and how to, how to cast, and how to actually catch a fish.
to cast, and how to actually catch a fish.
Thank you to everyone who came out to the 25th Annual Fishing Rodeo. And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
So a lot of people ask me, young and old, how can I get involved in my community? Well, this is it right here.
Please keep in mind that if you live in a neighborhood in District 5 and want to plan a cleanup, we're here to help. We'll provide all of the safety vests, the grabber sticks, gloves, everything that you need.
We have cleanups going all across the district. You have Council Smitherman, who's doing a cleanup, and also a pop-up farmer's market. So you, Council O'Quinn, that's in Smithfield, Council Woods.
Just a big piece of trash.
And so we're just out, and people from community, and we're just out here just cleaning up, essentially this main street, where as you see, a lot of cars come through and just kind of just loving on the neighborhood.
We're over here in the Smithfield community this morning, doing a little neighborhood cleanup in partnership with the church here, and we've got Century Pipe Fitters who are here volunteering. Some of the folks from the church here have brought out equipment, so they're going to do some grass cutting, as well as, you know, collecting the trash and everything.
Continuing the Be Litter Free Campaign, and we're super excited, you know, to be able to come out here and be a part of our neighborhood, hang out with our neighborhood president, Mr. Harris, and all of the people that's in the Central and South Prep area. So I challenge you all to be litter-free.
We just need folks to show up and volunteer. So I hope you guys are having a great weekend. We're here to help.
Come, join us. I think there are about five or six districts that are having a cleanup today. Call the city council office, look at the city council meeting, or go on our social medias, our website, and see what's going on. I think it's very important that we come back to a sense of community, neighbors helping neighbors. I think if we do that from there, you will see a drastic change in all of our neighborhoods.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Hey, everybody, Council Clinton Woods here. I want to invite you out to the 2022 Man Up Breakfast. We're going to be coming out today to celebrate fathers and impactful men in the community. It's going to be a great event, free event for men and women of all ages, and so definitely want to invite you out. We've got Art Franklin Company, he's going to deliver a great message as our keynote speaker, and we're going to have a panel on closing the wealth gap. Abra Barnes, Greg Jones, and Isaac Cooper are going to really bring us some important information on what we can do to kind of close this wealth gap. And then we're going to also have some awards, and so we've got some important impactful men that have been making incredible change in our community, and we want to recognize them. I want to see you there, join this free event. The link is on the screen, you can register. It's going to be this Saturday, June 18, at 9:00 AM. Can't wait to see you.